You left too soon here at the doorbell.
We must have.
Do this on purpose, I feel needed, Mike. The man behind the curtain.
Oh, yes. And we've had that one chosen. And we must have just. That one was clicked when I when it told me that the microphone was not working.
One, two, three, testing. Testing one, two, three.
Technology making our lives easier.
We're as good as we can get.
Okay. Just some roadway issues we got over the last week or so, we got, you know, issues with quarry and muddy roads, so we've been dealing with that. We had an issue with Northern War Authority just closing Mainland Road for some utility work that they were doing, so we kept them straightened down and on the right path.
They don't have approval to do that?
They just didn't bother notifying anybody. Sturgis Road Development with the Pico work and that Danell is doing. Talked to them yesterday, there's, yeah, there's still temporary electric lines that are out in the long curve crossing the street, so I was told that March fifteenth is when they're gonna do the the cutovers from the old to the new, so hopefully there's will go away sometime in the very near future. Just some department activities, we had a storm and let collapse on Sturgis Road near the Creek Road, so repair is scheduled for this week on that one. Park Avenue Fields, we aerated and top dressed both fields with compost. Line and seeded the areas to both fields to and also borrow some road blankets from the golf course to try to get disturbed areas. Try to promote and facilitate the grass to grow. Continue training and bulging at the parks and township building, we're downsizing beds, small areas where where we can and where it's appropriate. Continue working on the installation of camera systems on our dump trucks. That's just about completed. And that we're gonna get it, submit to dividend for reimbursement through our property liability grants. And lastly, our trout stocking for our ponds is scheduled for Friday, May, March twenty fourth and Thursday, April sixth. I've got conservation officers from Bishop Book Commission that are gonna participate along with the YMCA daycare kids and also the salvage and charter school. So we'll do again like we did last year, we'll have some bars, some tanks from traffic supply the water we dropped and then throw more water and dump the trout in the in the tanks and then let the kids scoop them out and throw them in the pond.
Fantastic.
Yeah, it was fun. It's good, it's a good thing. With it's with the daycare right there. And more concerned about the the age of the kids, you know, but they assured me that they would have plenty of parent volunteers. So it'll all be good. That's all I have.
Quick question on the Park Avenue Field, which is we, I did hear from colleague of mine who's involved in football and they had their bank with this past Saturday night and very complimentary of Lower Sanford for the facility and whatnot, so that was very nice feedback for everybody involved in the park stuff. I know we had talked a while ago, and I think it's still ongoing, but about assessing how we rent fields, provide access to fields and and value, like what's the the cost for using those fields? Just update on that if we where are we with that process?
Well, we have discussed it in the park board. It's not something that we have made a final decision on, but we are also still actively trying to get a grant to have a
A rep cap grant?
Yes. Decide what our power fields should be used or to give us recommendations on field usage. It's a sticky ricket because a lot of them when I say them, meaning the sports organizations, specifically the baseball organizations, really take care of the fields, you know, they do the mounds and they do the the faces and they keep they do the striping, they do the fertilization and all those types of
Dencing.
Yeah, so those are those are things that, you know, are no longer our cost, so do we there's a balance there, do we charge a flat fee based on, you know, size of the field, how often you're using it, do we do some sort of a
Per participant fee?
Say again?
A per participant.
Yes.
Some municipalities.
So we haven't made any final decision, it's been the way it's been for from the beginning. And I know that other municipalities do charge for their fields, and I think that that's one of the reasons we are so popular is because we do not.
So, well, and we have reached out to DCNR.
Right.
And last year, we kept being told that, oh, they're working on this program, they're working on this program. And, you know, and she and I will say Holly's been very good about following up with that. And most recently, the person who was in charge of it is now on
Gets extended.
Extended league.
Reached out with a person who is supposed to be taking therapy since ten per that Parkinson Rec and and State College, so I will see if I care for him today. Just wanna know whether that program is
Right, yeah, if it's something we can't rely on, we can move in a different direction then, right? That I just, I know that I've been hearing more and more, I don't know that anybody else has about, you know, the Oliver, the new fields over at Oliver are starting to seed in and whatever, is anybody gonna get to use them, who's gonna get to use them, how, so that's always gonna be the, you know, the tip of the spear of trying to make sure that we have a an equitable way to do it. You know, something that's not unfair to the township if we have a tremendous number of outside of the township residents. You know, if it was all township residents choosing it, that's a pretty easy discussion. But we don't have that scenario and it's just and what is the expectation for our level of maintenance versus as baseball knows? We do this, they can go here.
Right.
Soccer, we do this, if they wanna mow extra, they'd have to do it, so I guess they would I think with those couple of fields at Oliver coming on, it's gonna make that more of a a pressing issue coming forward, I don't know.
We've had challenges with, you know, the Harleyville Eagles and you know, and managing expectations of what they're supposed to do, I mean. In hindsight, we probably left the fields, you know, that you start a year too soon.
Right.
So I think I would caution that, you know, same thing for the new Oliver fields.
Right.
Because we've just and and part of it is the use.
They're very intense usage compared to the other ones.
Especially when you're with new grabs and new fields that aren't fully established.
Right.
That is why the market is falling, like we want, we want to see an established field before.
Oh, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Yeah.
But it's with the stall time, and I think it's the right, it's the right time for us to get, we can get ducks in a row.
Yep.
Yeah.
This too with cost. It would have to be per field basically and possibly the the use of it based on what the sporting organization is. Like, you know, the Park Avenue Fields, football's a much more intense scoring versus lacrosse, for example, lacrosse. They come in and use those fields in March, April, May. But yet they're using a field that was just recently used by football before winter set in. And now you have a field that may not be as wonderful as you would like it to be, but yet you know, it's it's and and they, the the lacrosse is not as intensive a use as football, so where do you like say that Harleyville Eagle, you folks should be paying a little bit more additional for the maintenance of these fields versus the lacrosse people, I, you know, those are things.
Well, that's why I think like almost a license agreement per season and this is the expectation of the field starting at the end, and if there's a discrepancy, you know, how does that get fixed and funded? And there are, there are ways to to figure that out, it's just a matter of having an appropriate system in place to to do that. But I know with the community center, you have a a lot sort of a license agreement with Harleyville Baseball and it stresses these things and soccer, right?
I think one thing too that actually I noted when you mentioned residing and all at the park field, Holly brought up too, so just to kind of touch base again. I know you talked before Doug about how you told, you know, certain organizations, hey, you know, try to practice here, here, here. I think it wouldn't be a bad idea for, you know, us just give a formal letter to each one when they start the season, hi, we're so glad to have you, keep in mind, you know, please try to respect the fields for others using it, this to throw out there as well, because here you are fixing the grass and all, you brought it up again.
We already have later.
It goes out to everybody and it basically irons that up, it says you need to leave that field better than you found it. And that's kind of what it is and
There's gonna have to be consequences.
And, you know, that's where I think, and there's a fair way to do it, and everybody knows it ahead of time, rather than it being something that has to be you know, at the end of it, oh, look how they left it, this wasn't hey, we all knew this going in, we, let's face it, we know football's gonna destroy the field. I mean, there's just, that that's the nature of that sport, the way they use the field, so how does it get restored each time they use it?
They suggested.
Astro term, well, we looked at that, we actually did look at that for that. Price came in again astronomically. Yeah, and it was expensive to make a table.
It's not just looks, it feels as well, we also obviously have to be worried when, you know, you wear the field, people get hurt. You bring up Astro, we got Astro toe, all that.
They get used all the way up until, you know, past the growing season.
Correct.
And then, you know, the girls lacrosse starts before the growing season starts.
Correct.
So there's really no, other than the middle of the summer, which is the worst time to try to see and get get new grass to grow. There's really no time for the fields to rest and for for, you know, us to try and reestablish you know, the damage that's been done.
Yeah.
So we deal with it.
Stay on that, yeah, I I would say my only thought is, if it doesn't look like the the grant money is gonna be available. Let's just, we can put that aside and come up with another plan to get to the same goal.
Okay, sounds out to the agenda.
Yeah.
All right. We good, Doug? Anything else for Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
You're up.
Yes, sir. In addition to Doug's update on the park camps, when we were looking at the next phase and what locations we should be looking at, we we're discussing the the golf course. Since the level of activity over there would make it a good candidate. So on a site visit, we realized they already have a camera system that we weren't aware of, so they have twenty two cameras. Fortunately, the same vendor that is doing ours did theirs. It is the same equipment and it is now incorporated into our system.
Who's monitoring it before?
They just
We got lucky there, but it wasn't
I don't know that they actually monitor it on a regular basis, I think what they had it for was if something happened, they could go back and look.
Right.
I think the nice thing about having a system and now is that it's in our vehicles, if there's alarm over there, the officer can go in his car, look at, you know, the situation before he can get there. Yeah.
What's happening before, right?
Yeah.
So Michael's still in some vocal training on how to run it on a PC, how to run it in the cars. So I could about have to go search through that, so that's that's a big part of the project that is probably taken care of.
Great. Good stuff.
The only other thing I have is the hiring update, tomorrow morning, we're doing the first round of interviews. Application volumes down, but we also had a very short open period and we'll move that if we need to, but we're gonna do a first round and then after the deadline of March ninth, hopefully we'll have more to do a second round. So, but just getting these first ones through and any backgrounds that need to be done. We should have a standing list to to move quickly.
Just out of curiosity is you find the list is coming from people new to long, wanting to get into it, whether they, or are you looking transfers from other departments still?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. So combination. Academy visits.
Okay.
And that has generated a fair
And that's helping?
Yeah, that's surprising. Well, I hope the academy helps. Or just we're getting a lot of applications from the academy.
Okay.
Students and some, some people with no experience, some people with as much as eighteen years' experience. So it's it's a mix. But more would be better. That's all I ask.
Very good, anything else for Chief Mywood? Thank you. Michael in absentee, I guess Joe is at
Yes, me.
That's you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the building zoning report for this morning, as of February twenty second, there were twenty seven building permits issued for the month of February. At the planning commission meeting in February twenty second, they recommended three fifty five Maple Avenue, which is the parking lot upgrade for approval. The High Point cul-de-sac, which is the backup plan for the Oak Drive situation over at the High Point at Sanford Development was recommended for approval. And comments and component for a sewer sale review was given authorization to sign by the township. For your meeting tomorrow night, twenty five Fretz Road, the Almac preliminary final land development was is on your for approval, eight forty one Main Street. Preliminary final plan development is also on for your approval. Two eighty five Maple Avenue, preliminary final land development, that Sips and Berry's parking lot extension is on for approval. The six ten Leta Rock Stationway Conditional Use Hearing, the accessory building is on for the hearing and whichever the board decides to move for approval on that. Ordinance twenty twenty three oh one, which is repealing the fee schedule in the zoning ordinance is up for hearing and for approval and then resolution. I guess that would be twenty three oh six, twenty three oh six is the building and zoning fee schedule. So that will update the fee schedule and then from here on forward, any updates to the fee schedule will happen as a resolution as opposed to what you're saying. And then the last item on for building zoning issues on the agenda are three fifty five Maple Avenue discussion of waves.
Excellent. Sounds good, sounds good, so that would then roll right into the manager report.
Thank you, it was Karen. First item of the manager's report is the review of the meeting minutes for February first, twenty twenty three, if anyone has any questions, comments or changes.
Have a question whether we welcome it. It's still up in the air.
Okay, and the the agenda for tomorrow evening, we just kind of went over most of the items on there. The ordinance twenty twenty three oh one, repealing of the fee schedule and the ordinance. Next item is review of bids for Alderper Park and Park Avenue Basin retrofit project, which Mr. Jones already discussed. Resolution twenty three oh six, establishing the fee schedule. Resolution twenty three oh seven, preliminary final land development for two eighty five Maple Avenue. Resolution twenty three oh eight, preliminary final land development for eight forty one Main Street. Resolution twenty three oh nine, preliminary final development for twenty five Fretz Road to Almac. And the next item is tri-party agreement, I think we need to have a little bit of a discussion about this. I just give an update and that's why Andy's here this morning to kind of give us an update of where that that is. The tri-party agreement between A tri-party agreement between Jacobs Crossing and High Point at South Southford. Authorization execute determining depending on whether that I was done. I don't know if you want to talk about that now.
Sure, I can I can talk about that now if you'd like. Um so in essence, this tri-party agreement is an agreement between K Builders. Who is the owner and developer of what was the Jacobs Crossing property? And Fox Lane Homes uh who was developing High Point at Southford, which is right across the Oak Drive Extension and the township. And by way of a little bit of background, uh the construction of the Oak Drive Extension is actually on the Jacobs Crossing approved land development plan. Um.
To a certain point.
To us to a certain point. However, um Jacobs Crossing and the High Point Development need Oak Drive to be constructed for purposes of their access. Obviously, the High Point Development is currently under construction. Jacobs Crossing, they have not recorded their plan yet or K Builders hasn't reported the plan yet. And there's um, we're we're unclear exactly when they're going to begin construction at this point. Uh Fox Lane and K Builders have tried to negotiate an agreement. For Fox Lane to take over the construction of of the Oak Drive Extension. Um they were unsuccessful by themselves. So the township uh sort of stepped in and tried to help broker. Uh an agreement between the two builders to get Oak Drive um extension constructed, and that's what this tri-party agreement does. Uh it essentially permits. Fox Lane to construct the the Oak Drive Extension, um except for the wearing course, which would be completed by K when they come in and record their plan and build their project out. Uh the agreement also requires Fox Lane to post a bond to to secure the improvements with the township. Um we have a whole bunch of our standard land development agreement provisions in that tri-party agreement to make sure that that's constructed pursuant to the Jacobs Crossing. Um land development plan. So uh in essence, it's just a way for uh Oak Drive Extension to get constructed now as opposed to waiting for. K to eventually record their plan and build out their project.
Do we have any uh idea what the timing is on this?
For for Fox Lane?
For yeah, Jake the.
Jacobs Crossing, the K project?
Yes.
We don't. Um I mean, they they will tell us they plan to get going within a year or eighteen months. But it's it's it is a little bit of a it is a little bit of a moving target and they've admitted that for sure.
Um my issue with the leaving the base course exposed for a long period of time. In my experience, it starts breaking down pretty quick if you don't have that top core course on there. But they replacing the entire base course when they go to do their work or they just going to top it. I'd be afraid that the road would fail. And do you have any um ideas on that?
Well, I think if we if an inspection is done prior to the, you know, the final wearing course, which is typically done. Then we address any deficiencies at that point.
Yeah, when when.
I'm sorry, just I mean typically prior to them dedicating it, we would have to accept dedication. Okay. They would have to do a full inspection, repair any base. And then they would still have the eighteen month maintenance period after the top is on there based on a bond. So we have. Le- lengthy security on a situation like that.
Yeah, and I think when when Fox.
The critical component is before they top it to make sure that we don't hear the setting for an extent.
Right, right.
Period of time.
The equipment they have gone over.
Any defects should have, you know, reared their heads by then.
Right.
So that we can uh we can make sure that our engineers are aware and they're aware that we. Get the problem repairs done prior to wearing course.
Okay.
Very good.
I I guess the the next one is sort of related, right?
But really, the only, I mean, in this scenario, we have no risk in this. All we're doing is. Getting improvement that has been on our capital improvement plan, front loaded by a developer who wasn't responsible for it. But needs it for his project and the risk is between Fox Lane and and K is Fox Lane is the one holding the bag if.
Fox Lane is the one holding the bag. If they're putting up all the money to construct the improvement. And they're not going to get that money until K until K builds.
But we're in no different position than we would have been if K came in to do their tri-party agreement for their development. Correct, okay.
And the only issue I see and just it just came to me is just winter maintenance. Because it's not, you know, there's no where final wearing course.
It's the developer's responsibility.
Yes, there won't be any dedication. There won't be any of that. So it's it's their responsibility.
The developer's responsibility until point of dedication. I I would assume that's written to.
Just like we'd be just like Fox Lane's internal roadways. Um they they they're responsible for keeping those maintained until they dedicate.
Right.
And to your.
But they may be long gone by the time the uh, you know. The other developer.
Well, but that's my question. Here's my question. Fox Lane's responsibility does not end. Until K takes over, correct?
Correct.
So if K never builds, this is Fox Lane's to complete, which would more than likely be Fox Lane would come in and say, we want to top this. We want to dedicate it and we want to be done with it.
I agree.
Okay, yeah. That's their only way out.
Yeah.
Their only way out is either. Um K takes over or they dedicate per our standards, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And if you if you recall, Fox Lane. Before they complete their project, they actually have to construct. The the Culver portion of of Oak Drive, so they're going to be there quite a while working on on the Oak Drive Extension.
So by the time this is done, we'll have a substantial portion of the Oak Lane Oak Drive Extension completed.
Yes.
Except for the bridge.
Yes, we we uh I guess township staff encouraged the two developers to come to an agreement um by themselves. And they wrote that, you guys. No, they drafted the tri-party agreement, correct? But we we, you know, they were they were not getting anywhere by themselves. So we had a meeting here at the township building with township staff. All the representatives of K and the representative of Fox Lane and, you know, basically said, can we come to an agreement on on uh Oak Drive? And we hatched out some of the issues and and um Fox Lane's council put together that tri-party agreement with the township on it. We added in our standard development agreement conditions into it. And that's the agreement they have today. Good, yeah. Um I guess part of that is it was the next item on the agenda. It's it's the um. Extension of of the Jacobs Crossing Plan. I think that's resolution.
Twenty twenty three ten.
Yeah, twenty twenty three ten. Um what 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 we discovered during that meeting with K and and Fox Lane was that um K's. Plan approval, the Jacobs Crossing plan approval is beyond um the five-year vested rights period under the Pennsylvania municipality's planning code. And what that means is. Although their plan is plan approval is still valid, it's valid in perpetuity. After five years, you're subject to revising your plans for any. Changes in the ordinance that ordinances that may have happened after that five-year period. So there's a five-year protection period. Uh they were unaware of that um in response to learning that they immediately asked us for an extension of that vested rights period. Um they initially requested no um definite time for the extension. They came back to eighteen months. Uh there's a resolution that you have that would extend their vested rights period for one year from the date of this resolution. Um and of course, it's conditioned upon them entering into this tri-party agreement.
Has Michelle looked at? The approval versus the new ordinance? I mean, the biggest thing that's changed probably in the five years, the zoning hasn't changed, but the salad did. Um has she looked at that in the context of this plan to see? How far off one way or the other they are with regards to the waivers they receive versus what would be needed, et cetera?
She did. So we asked uh K Builders engineer, who's been the engineer for the entire project, to submit. Uh a memo to the township that listed, you know, all of the waivers that were previously granted and any any issues that. May have come up, given the fact that an entirely new subdivision of land development ordinance was passed. Um in the time since their plan was approved, um CKS did an analysis on their own. They also looked at that memo. Uh and there were a few very minor changes um. In the requirements that waivers were previously granted for, and in fact, some of the waivers actually. Uh went away as a result of the revision, because I I think the new salad though. Took into consideration some aspects of this type of of development and some other uh requirements changed, but they were relatively minor. So. Um I don't think there was a significant issue there from a plan perspective.
So from the staff standpoint, there does not appear to be.
No, I mean, if anything, change has actually changed to the benefit of. K builders over the Jacobs Crossing approval, there was no negative impact, I would say on that. They will still adhere to the waivers because they agreed to adhere to the waivers. Um but if they had come back. Since the um subdivisional anti-milling ordinance was uh changed. They would have had a shorter waiver, let's say. The negative process.
What happens uh when the extension runs out, like or if it wasn't extended to five year and I I was familiar with it, but what happens on their end, they would have to. They'd have quicker. How's that?
Well, their plan approval is still good indefinitely. Um it's just. It you're it's just if there were ordinances that changed, then they would have to respond to those ordinances. That's that's basically it. Um there are a few that that maybe changed a little bit here and there, but nothing significant from what the the code looked like. When it was originally improved, but you know theoretically, if there was a significant change that happened. Um then they would have to, you know, come in and revise their plan accordingly. But as it stands right now, you know, I don't think that there's been a significant change based on the memo from. K's engineer and then CKS's review of that memo.
Or they could ask to waive the salad that did change, right?
Or zoning zoning hasn't changed out there.
Correct.
That that's the more likely result. They would come in and they would ask for waivers from the new requirements and then the board would make that decision again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. We good there?
Moving on, uh next item on the agenda, tomorrow night is three fifty five Maple Avenue, discussion of waivers. Uh. Followed by the conditional use hearing, the accessory uh building at six ten Leta Rock Stationway. Uh resolution twenty three eleven authorizing the application for the DCNR grant for the buyer retention basin at Harleach Field Community Center. Uh next item is an indemnity agreement concerning Pennant Highway occupancy occupancy permit for stormwater management facilities located in the writing right of way. This is uh related to eight forty one Main Street. Um and the next two items are approval of fire police assistance. At the Harleachville Black Community Appreciation Day on June tenth and the town ensign days. Uh Fisher Park on May thirteenth.
Let me make one suggestion on the agenda, just out of kindness to the court reporter during the conditional use hearing. Should we move it up? So that she doesn't have to sit through everything else.
Or down, so she has to sit through.
We don't have to adjust. It's just.
We could change. I mean, you obviously can change the agenda.
Okay.
They want to change, but I'll I'll make it.
Having her in the middle there.
Don't let me forget. There's a really important part. All right, very good.
One other question, Mr. Chairman, I know, and Kevin, you can pop in on this too, I guess. Obviously, we have a number of applications that are preliminary final land development approval. That's been a question of giving that waiver in the past and part of the process has been. I think everybody who applies for that, the relatively small applications. Looks at that as, okay, we'll just wait to get the preliminary final to come in and get in front of the board on this discussion, whereas. If they were separating it, they might come earlier to us to preliminary approval, so that the timeframe is a little bit different, but our past practice has been to do preliminary final. It's been raised. I just want to have a general discussion so that we can be, staff can be advising applicants properly of how the board wants to operate with these so that we don't run into that problem. And in fairness, not have to always, you know, when they're coming in for that waiver, have that discussion with them as one of those waivers. So I just wanted to open that up for a quick discussion here, just to see if that's the process we want to continue to follow through with.
The advantage of the advantage of having preliminary final is it allows the applicants the ability to work out some of the planning. And engineering details in advance of getting in front of the board. The risk you run is if you come in for preliminary, there's a chance that you could have wholesale changes. Right? Is you're going to come in very early, really after maybe the first comment letter from from Michelle and and Stephanie. And at that point, it's a it's a possibility that, you know, significant changes could occur. So I my preference is. To to wait for for those reasons. I like to see a more complete plan if we're going to decide on. Um making an approval that it, you know, what's before us is what's actually going to be applied for.
And I know the planning commission is operated under the. Guideline that's told applicants, you do not move on from the planning commission until it's a clean. Application. Issues have been worked out. There's no like the review letters or small things on that line. Where they would have the right to ask for that preliminary plan because there's and. Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, from the standpoint of final plan, once you have preliminary final, it's really a. I don't want to call it an academic exercise, but it's a procedural exercise that you have basically just satisfied. Conditions of the preliminary plan and that you are ready to present. Plans for recording and get land development agreements.
That's right. I think the MPC says, once you have preliminary, you're entitled. The final plan approval in accordance with the preliminary approval. So you're right. It's just it's just a step of. Of cleaning the plan up and dealing with the conditions of preliminary approval.
But in fairness, I've heard what Kevin said, which is if you do it separately, that's two different opportunities for it to be heard at a public meeting.
Correct.
And I think that's been your point.
Well, I I know when I joined the board, I was actually asked specifically, okay, what's the difference between preliminary final? And, you know, I don't know who told me, but I know members of the board who has advised me why, some of the reasons. Some of the other reasons are. As you said, get your marks in check, you know, let's make sure you follow through with the engineer's recommendations. Let's make sure you did this. Yes, it gives a benefit to the public. I specifically brought that up with Fernfield. Cause that was one that as Thanksgiving, nothing on the agenda, then we had consideration of waivers, then preliminary final land development. That doesn't give anybody an opportunity to even know that that happened right over the holidays, in my opinion. So when you do something like that, okay, we have a quick, here's all our waivers, here's the things. Yes, we know about us board, but again, we had five days to look at that. It those situations that did go through the planning commission, that was at the planning commission over a year ago. Almac coming up tomorrow is another example where. Yes, they've done some, you know, that is something that's been to the board before, but again, that's something that hasn't been on the board since I've been there. So it's not something familiar to me. That's my reasonings for certain situations. I could see situations where. You might think, okay, I could understand it's such a small thing, but then again. You don't pick and choose. I at least for me, I don't want to pick and choose. Well, you know, this is a quid pro quo because it might be simple to me, but it might be. Something big to someone else. That's that's my reasoning for the preliminary final land. There's a reason that they're in place. I want to make sure all the crosses. Or, you know, everything's marked up correctly and all the checks are in balance. That's reasonable. That's my.
Other thoughts? I don't really have a preference either way. The preliminary final is fine for me. Um yeah, I mean, separating them. I I just don't. I I can see it be I can see Kevin's point. If somebody has a problem with it, it gives more chance to. To complain about it or, you know, voice their opinions about it um in between the preliminary and final. Um but unless it's a really highly contested. Property, there really isn't ever any complaints and and you have to advertise. You have to notify all the neighbors anyway, right? Don't you when you first start a um a plan. Of what you're doing there or now.
Unless it's a zoning change.
Oh, zoning change, okay, okay.
So is it not more the time from from finding out about a project to to giving it the preliminary final? I just want to make sure I'm using the right. I mean, should we just ask for a better time window?
Well, I I think the window is and is what what can happen is people will submit their preliminary plan. They'll get their initial review letter. It could take months to satisfy all the comments in that review letter. So then they'll come back and, you know, because they know they're working to try to get a clean plan before it comes out of the planning commission. Whereas I think, you know, it is a timing issue if. Uh you know, I do this for a living, obviously, and I've made that clear to everybody. If I know the township won't grant preliminary final. We'll get we'll push preliminary recommendation for preliminary from the planning commission much earlier in the process. To get that preliminary done, because then I'll go through and cross all the Ts and dot all the Is to come back in for the final. Whereas I'll wait to push preliminary to just do preliminary final and do all that T crossing and I dotting at the same time, so that when it gets in front of the board, it's done. So it's it's really, and the reason I'm bringing this up is I just want for. For many of these applications, our process has been one way and to separate it at this point, we did not give them the. I don't think the township gave them the right guidance to get to where they're at. And going forward, let's just make sure we're giving them the right guidance, so there isn't a problem down the road. Because it'll still function the same way. You can still probably make it work within a similar timeframe. It's just a matter of how the applications get pushed and the direction the planning commission has for when they can make a recommendation for preliminary.
Yeah, I guess just on on that too, in in my experience, um since since I've been doing. Approval resolutions here, the practice has been always to do preliminary final. Unless the applicant requested preliminary, because sometimes an applicant might want preliminary plan approval in order to start, you know. Shopping the project for financing or to sell it or or something of that nature, but if someone is invested in the process and they're going to see it all the way through. I think the preference, and Chris would know this, is is to. You know, get all of those issues worked out so that you can get preliminary finally come for one time. So that you can get preliminary finally come to the board one time, um and I think that's that has been the practice that. That I've seen here over the course of, you know, several years.
I think a few other things too, in the touch with uh Supervisor Sharon said, you know, it's not so much to that gives people an opportunity to complain. But in some ways, it gives people an opportunity to really understand what is happening as well, there are certain situations where, whoa, what is this coming up? But again, if we have five days, it doesn't go out unless it's a, anybody living near that Burnfield. People are coming to me, what what happened, you know, what, where did this come from, so those kind of things, I wouldn't say so much everybody, you know, gives an opportunity to complain, which. Absolutely welcome to, I welcome that too, but we oftentimes we can educate as well. Um in the past too, um as to expectations, I mean, they're asking for a waiver. The expectations is that they bring a preliminary and a final, the fact that they need a waiver, it's like, well, you know, this is the, this is what we have.
Well, in fairness, under the MPC and case law with that, if a township routinely grants the same waiver. An applicant can have the, and correct me if I'm wrong in this, there is a sense of, there is an entitlement to that. Waiver being granted in the future, so if we've always waived concrete curb for Belgium Block curb, we've done it for the ten previous applicants. The eleventh applicant has the uh assumption that they were gonna get that, so I think that falls in that category of. This is a practice of this township, not a a, so that's why I'm bringing it up, because I don't, I was, if we're gonna change the practice, let's change the practice. And not make it a controversial issue.
The thing that, the thing that I don't like about what's saying with the practice, and I learned, we had earlier on, it might have been, actually, I think it was Jacobs Crossing. We can look it up in our minutes, they had, it was for, oh, they said similar to the waivers granted in Jacobs Crossing, which when I wasn't on the board. Every property is unique, every property has a unique situation, I don't think we should treat it as a general, wow, we've done it before, because maybe there's something here we didn't know. Maybe there's insight from neighbors we didn't see, because I live here, I don't live over here, I don't cross that, I heard a lot about. The things with the electricity happening on Scenic Drive, I'm not hearing as much overall under stress, you know, so it's one of those things as well. And you know, I know in the past, as Ken, you asked, what I've seen is, we've had preliminaries come, and you're right, maybe not all the crosses. Might be slashed the dots, you know, on the eyes, but we can see that they're making an effort, a concentrated effort. And in timeline that I've seen, where I've seen preliminary then final, and it's only been more recent that I've seen them kind of combined there, at least that I recall here. Is this been the month, you know, we had preliminary one month, next month we have the final, that's, that was my take on it. That's that's why I'm hesitant to say, well, this, we don't wanna give the expectation that we're just gonna say we waived this one.
But for it to get, I I I'm the new guy, sorry, but for it to get to preliminary, it's already been vetted through.
Funny question.
It's already been vetted through the township staff, it's already been vetted through the professionals that we pay money to, right?
And typically, your outside agencies have also looked at, so you have sewer authority, if it's sewered, you have front pen water, if it's. Have public water, if it's got highway permits, the department has typically seen the application, so.
Right, it's it's, so the hangup to me seems more like public notice and the public having an opportunity, but if it's gone through Planning Commission. That's an opportunity as well for the.
Some sometimes we add things, like I said, hey, you know, or not, I, but you know, the board has said, let's put this, you know, make sure we do this going forward as well. And it's to follow through that, I think that one of the recent ones that one of my arguments was, hey, we're gonna, and they did say we will do this, but it was something that we added at that meeting. So it might not have been at the Planning Commission recently, or things in Saldo may have changed and such, not if you're going back again a year plus later. So and that's the thing, you can, you have a great point, there are certain situations where you can kind of see, it's right there, but again, we shouldn't pick and choose there. And maybe to your point, we should have a different procedure in place, but that's where I have that.
Well, and it it's not even, it's just guidance, I mean, it's really, the the procedure is what it is, they have to ask for a waiver. But the the guidance I would sus- suspect is that. We, the the board wants to see a clean application, I mean, I think most everything that's coming through here is clean. Probably has almost all their outside agency permits lined up, is relatively ready to go to construction. Whereas oftentimes, you'll get preliminary and that will be then subject to, they haven't gotten their NPS permit yet, they haven't got their HOP, which is fun. And that's, it's, I'm not arguing one way or the other, I just wanna make sure that we're giving the right guidance. So that when an applicant comes in, they know what to expect and we, they they then follow that through. Because it is, it's a timeliness factor, instead of it being at the end that, oh, we're not gonna grant that waiver for that, so, you know, you gotta come back. It it's really just a, for me, how we we are presenting that process to people. I know when I go to Upper Providence Township, they used to grant preliminary final, last two applicants I had gone through. The board just said, no, we don't do that anymore, you're gonna do this and you're gonna do that, Warrington Township does. That also, whereas a bunch of other places, no, 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 we, the board only wants to see it once and then, so it's, it it is a municipality by municipality. You almost culture when it comes down to it, I'm raising it so that we make sure we understand what the culture is and how we wanna proceed with it, that's all.
Again, I think, I think a lot of them are unique, so it's hard to, it's hard to say for each one as a whole for me, so I.
Well, but but then then your answer is.
So again, with the rest, whether the rest of the board will say, hey, this one is more unique or not, that's, you know, that's the take as the board collectively, that's what I meant by that. For me personally, no, I like to keep them separate.
What's the general, since, I mean, I I again, it could go either way.
If I mind, cause that, one of the things you do here that I've never seen many places is, and with the exception of Burnfield, and that was kind of an aberration only because it had been. Seen by the Planning Commission, so, you know, almost a year. The Burnfield, the the houses on Morewood. So what was that development called? Generally, you know, what happens here is that if you go through the waiver process, which is another opportunity. Because usually what happens is they give an overview of the development, then they ask for the waivers, or however we've done in the past, but. I've never been in a municipality that did that, so you know, you do have an added step here, which doesn't take place in in other places, like at least in my experience.
And again, I, for me, you know, as Ken, you said you were new, when I first joined too, we had, we all had to go through, like, it was quite, you know, a difference. Uh I understood it's different for everybody, it was new for me at the same time, but uh I think when Dave, you know, came onto the board. It was one of my first times actually coming into the room too, because we were online, so I knew things were done a little differently. But I I was attending meetings, you know, as you guys know, who were on here for the last year, the waivers, I didn't remember seeing that come to the board before, I do like.
That was a long time practice.
And that's why I wanted to say that, that might have impacted what I did see, but I.
Yeah, I mean, and and I would only say the last comment I'm gonna make is, some of the redevelopment type activities, like for for me, the the parking lot expansion, two eighty-five Maple. That's almost to the realm of waiver of land development when it comes down to it, where a preliminary final makes sense in that regard, versus a larger land development where. Uh a Fox Lane's metropolitan job where you've got a lot of moving parts, you wanna get the preliminary done, and then there's a whole bunch that has to get cleaned up with outside agency permits. So I I do see an ability to differentiate those, and a lot of what we see, what I don't want is, I don't wanna make the process so onerous. That people don't wanna reinvest, particularly in the redevelopment projects that we're seeing, which is a bunch of smaller properties, you know. That it's a small business owner that's trying to get through the process, so that that double process costs money.
This process is so arduous, anyone who thinks it needs more oversight has never taken a piece of ground, so tried to develop.
So it's interesting, you say two eighty-five, cause that's one thing I was gonna look up, actually, when I went home, I don't remember that being a consideration for waivers, final land development while we're here last week. Yet, here it is on the agenda, I'm not positive, I was gonna check. I'm pretty sure, I will check the video on that, but I didn't. Was that one that we discussed with a consideration, I don't think it was something that was.
They know, they.
It was mentioned as an afterthought that I forgot to put that on there when I left, but we never discussed that, I don't believe.
I thought, well.
Again, I'll check the video, I'm not positive, but that's, you know, but again, if that's the case.
That is the perfect example.
Example that if that's the reason, but that's one of those situations I wanna double check, but, and that's why I didn't say anything earlier, but I'm gonna look at that, and that's, that's my. But again, I understand it's a money thing, cause somebody said that to me early on, with one of the developments, they said that would cost us if we do that, but again. I'm not worried about, you know, that's something, if that's in our waiver, that's something that I'm more worried about the residents understanding what's happening.
Well, I think we have to be careful, I think we have to balance both of those, because many of these are also our residents that are doing these applications too. So it's a balance to make sure that we have a fair process when it comes through and um and be reasonable. And that's the, all I was looking at, but I, you know, I just wanna make sure we understand appropriate guidance is what it comes down to.
Right, so that we're, so staff is telling the applicants when they come in and make.
Here's what you should expect.
What you should expect, and the Planning Commission should be made aware of, hey, after their first meeting, there's a very good chance they're gonna go get. Which I could tell you right now, Madison John are not gonna be thrilled with, but that's a different conversation. Right, am I right?
They don't normally work that.
They don't like it though, because it, I'm telling you, they wanna get those details worked out, the planning commission meetings are advertised. If the community doesn't like a development, just like across the street from, I guess, is it on one thirteen Morewood, uh there was a hundred people here. I think you were, you might have been online for that, but but you, listen, when the when the community doesn't like it, they'll they'll like, you know, they come, they come out. Anyway.
On that note, um I wanna mention too, YouTube is uh up, which is great, that people can go back and see, that is helpful for things that people might say, hey, what happened here? Um how does the rest of the board, this is something we can discuss later, but feel about having all meetings on there, for example, Planning Commission.
Or can we just finish this discussion first?
You could put that on a feature agenda.
No, I'm fine with talking about it, but I just wanted to make sure we haven't wrapped this closed yet, or do we wanna think about it, just wrap this up, I mean.
Joe, Joe's looking for direction for Mike, I think, is.
And which is why I brought up, this is a, it really can become a difference without a distinction. As long as the guidance is right, and I'm just looking at it and saying, we've got a couple that are coming this way with the guidance they received. And I think we should move forward with that appropriately, but as new applications come in. So we don't have to, you know, in fairness to you and for, we don't have to bring it up every time, because we've got the right guidance going out to them, the applicants will react to that.
If if it's currently, and I I agree with what you're saying, we, you know, it's nice to have guidance, currently, we have a consideration of waivers and they know it's a waiver. So if they were to come to us with that consideration, probably, we would have it discussed, and we have on the, and that's what I'm saying, so in that case, we kind of do have that process for that. What expectations could come about would depend on that situation, that property.
But the considerate in the waiver usually happens before preliminary files.
It happens at the late end of the process, yeah.
And that's an assumption that we're going to say, sure, yeah, we'll we'll grant this one, like that.
But sometimes we grant partial waiver approval and we deny others, and then sometimes we say.
And also, we are the backstop for the residents, really, that's why we're elected, anyway, that's why we're here. If we think it's not a good idea, we we stop that, right?
We good? Do you have a sense?
No. We'll have, yeah, we'll, we'll have discussions with the development, developers come in.
And if, you know, s- sometimes it's Mike at the at the counter, right, he's gonna tell him, listen, you you might wanna seek preliminary approval on this. Separate from final, because there are certain aspects.
Right, there's a lot of moving parts, if they're, if you're gonna be hanging up there, waiting for, you know, outside permit approvals and things like that. And that may be the process, if it's a smaller one, three fifty-five, I think Maple is a good example where really, that's a very minor. Land development and to to go through a preliminary and then a final is still overkill.
And here's one last question, I don't even know, and I should know this reference, does final land development application go back to the Planning Commission, Andy?
Final?
Yeah.
Once you have final approval?
No, once you have preliminary approval.
Oh, I I think if you only have a recommendation for preliminary, you have to go back, otherwise, I think it sits there, so it won't come back there, that's what I've seen in our past.
Yeah, because I mean, just other municipalities, final goes straight to the board supervisors.
If your planning commission recommends final approval?
Uh you, your planning commission, if you get a preliminary plan approval.
Right, oh, you don't.
Yeah, because they are looking at it as a procedural item with regards to, final is really signed record plans and developers agreements.
Yeah, I don't think that there's anything that says one way.
I think the practice we had, I'm not sure what was.
Do we have need for executive sessions?
We do that.
Alright. And I think our work is done.
Very good.
Thank you, Paul. We done recording?